Shela. And I have some introductory remarks. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2022-10. Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format in person at the Forbes Auditorium, and, which is not right, and via Zoom. AB 361 suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act, allowing district board members to participate in person or by video conference. Members of the public may participate in person or via Zoom. Zoom details are listed on the meeting agenda. The meeting is streamed live on the district's website and YouTube channel. Members of the public who wish to comment on an item on the agenda or within the jurisdiction of the district will have three minutes. Public comment may be provided in person, via Zoom, or by emailing the clerk of the board. Such comments will become part of the board meeting record. And, I don't know, are we going to have anyone attending, a board member attending remotely today?
We do. We have Director Estrada who...
All right. So then we'll make sure to call on Director Estrada as items come up to make sure he's participating, and we'll do all the votes by roll call. Next. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance by the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. President. President Powell?
Here.
Vice President Estrada?
Here.
Thank you. Director Bianco?
Here.
Director Aguilar?
Here.
And we will note when Director Nelson arrives. I understand he's on his way here.
Right. Good. And we do have a quorum for conducting business. Are there any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sorry, not that we're aware of.
Nor I. Is there anyone from the public wishing to make public comment at this time?
Mr. President, we do have Mrs. Kalamonis, who's here in the audience, and she also did provide a copy of a written letter which was distributed to the board, and you should have that.
All right. Make sure that mic's on.
Okay.
There you go.
Good morning, President Powell. Director's staff. I come before you today to respectfully ask that you must consider recalculating evaporation from the wave basin. Currently, CVW Landscape Ordinance defines a water feature as "any water applied to the landscape for non-irrigation, decorative purposes including fountains, streams, ponds, and lakes." The wave basin is considered a water feature under CVWD Landscape Ordinance Number 1302.4. Water features use more water than efficiently irrigated turf grass and are assigned an evapotranspiration adjustment factor of 1.1 for stationary body of water and 1.2 for moving body of water for this reason. The proposed wave basin is essentially a lake with moving water, and it's why the factor of 1.2 is used to estimate evaporation at the Coral Mountains Surf Resort in La Quinta. What are some of the issues with this assumption and calculations used for Coral Mountain? Per hydrologist, a six-foot wave that will be traveling for almost a half a mile has more surface area than just the base area for the pool. For example, if the pool basin water surface is 12.5 acres, the actual square footage surface area to be calculated for evaporation is significantly higher and must account for the total wave surface. If the wave itself does wash over areas, those areas must be considered for evaporation. Significant wind events must be used in any calculations for evaporation, as water will be absorbed into the air at a much higher rate since the air is moving and won't become saturated. Per the attached table, pan evaporation numbers that were used as part of the calculations for evaporation by CVWD have not been updated since 2005. That year, the Indian area had only 99 days over 100. In 2020, for example, we had 140 days over 100 and significantly higher temperatures. This would cause significantly more evaporation. Wadi Adventures in the United Arab Emirates is only a wave pool in the desert environment. It has to pipe desalinated water from the coast for 140 miles, so they know exactly how much water is added to the pool. From May to November, they added 40,000 gallons, and from December to April, they added 10,000 gallons. Please note, they cooled their pool to 84 degrees for the protection of their surfers from the potential of heat stroke and from deadly protozoa. So cooler water evaporates less than Coral Mountain Wave Basin, which will be in the 90s in the summer. Summer replenishment was 1.5% a day, which equates to 270,000 gallons for our Coral Mountain 18-million-gallon pool if our pool was only at 84 degrees. That's 38 million for only 140 days versus the CVW calculated 24 million gallons for the whole year. This is not including the wind events and higher water temperatures. It's only 140 days, not the full year. It does not include the extra surface area for the wave that is exposed to evaporation. For your information, the Kelly Slater Wave Pool Limoore, which is the equivalent technology to this one, has said they lose 250,000 gallons on hot days. They only had 40 days over 100, with the hottest day 107. La Quinta had 140 days over 100 with the high temperature 124, 124 degrees. Attached, you will see our calculations using an EPA formula that takes into account wind and high temperatures. We only use monthly averages, and that came to 740 acre-feet or 260 million gallons. It did not take into account the increased wave surface. I've attached the water bill for a local 18-hole golf course. That was 164 million gallons of water consumption in a year. That's a lot less than the surf pool. The golf course was down 15% year over year in the summer and overall down year over year. Golf courses conserve. Surf pools cannot conserve. 15% less water means the surf pool can't operate. They must close. We need your help to stop the surf park marketing mantra of less water than the golf course. It is vitally important that CVWD recalculates evaporations for all new surf parks and lagoons in the desert. Our city governments in this time of drought must understand the folly of approving these water features. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to make public comment?
I'm looking, sorry.
That's right.
Mr. President, I do not see anybody on Zoom. However, if there is someone that I miss, please use the raise hand feature, and we will call upon you.
Okay. All right, yeah, just let me know. All right, so employee recognitions. We have one 20-year anniversary who's present in the room. So I'll read this, and then we come on up to the front and have a little presentation. So David Roberts, Auto Parts Specialist II. Dave Roberts was hired as a storekeeper at CVWD, but before his start, the need of the district changed, and he was offered the Auto Parts Specialist I position. Not too many people can say that they were promoted before they even went to orientation. Dave spent the next 11 years in the parts room, where he supplied the parts and supplies for thousands of vehicles and equipment repairs. In 2014, Dave took over the maintenance and inventory of the fuel service station, where he has managed millions of gallons of fuel, and the tire department for the entire fleet. When the Parts Specialist II position was created, Dave was the man for the job. Now he oversees the parts department for two facilities and maintains the regulatory fuel station inspections and fuel inventory. Both desert natives, Dave and his wife Patty, have three daughters, Kaylee, Chloe, and Madison, and he enjoys leaving town with his family in the summer to escape the heat. So 20-year anniversary, congratulations, Dave.
Come on down.
This is your pleasure.
Thank you.
This is for you, and congratulations.
Jeff, do you and Sylvia want to come over?
No, no, no. We get out of the picture.
Oh, okay.
Chicken.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right. Now it's your opportunity to impress us with your oratory skills. Anything you want to say?
I have none.
None?
But thank you.
Matt, Stuart, anything?
Thank you.
There you go.
Save it up for your 30-year.
They will.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Nice. Short and sweet. Good. All right. So this brings us to the consent calendar. We have items 6A through G.
I'll make a mark to the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, good. We have a motion and a second, and we will go to a roll call vote. I want to make sure that Vice President Estrada didn't have any items to pull before we go to that vote.
I don't see him.
He's there.
He's there. We don't see him having any comments. He did state that your mic keeps cutting in and out, so I'm checking on that, so I don't know if he can hear. Director Estrada, we just want to make sure you can hear us, okay?
Or not. He looks pretty frozen there.
I know. He looks frozen.
Move your ears.
Director Estrada, can you hear us?
I guess he's got no comments.
There he is.
His mics are cutting off.
I turned on the other mic, his mic, since he's not here. Maybe that'll help.
Director Estrada, can you hear us?
No, you're in stereo.
It says his mic isn't. If you're... There you go. Your mic was muted.
He might cut his video feed so that he doesn't have a transmission problem.
He's saying no, he can't hear us. Okay. Let me take a quick... Just give me two minutes to just check this.
Yeah, we weren't really saying anything if he couldn't hear us. We're all waiting. We're all waiting for him to say something.
Yeah, but he's been... Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes. There we are.
Okay. So the speaker's mic at the podium seems to be working fine, and whatever reason, it's your mic, John, and...
Maybe shut off a little. Yeah.
It kind of works, and then it doesn't work.
How about now?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right. So the question is, did you have any items on the consent calendar that you wanted to pull?
No.
Okay, good. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Let's do a roll call vote.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Vice President Estrada?
We were so close.
He's frozen again. I can tell. There he is. Vice President Estrada, we're taking roll on consent calendar.
Just in time. 8:14.
There he is. Let's see what he's saying. Let's try if we can cut your feed, Director Estrada, and see if that...
Video feed.
If it's a... Excuse me. Yes, your video feed. And do audio only. Let's see if that helps a little bit.
Consent calendar.
Hey, sir. Good morning.
Can we take a two-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go ahead and take a break.
So we're partway through the vote on the consent calendar.
You have a motion?
Oh, good.
Your motion and a second. We're trying to approve it.
In one vote.
We have one yes. That's all we got.
Soon, the motion and the second positive of the vote.
You got a minute? Can we chat about something?
We'll go chat. We have a different topic I wanted to talk to you about.
I shouldn't like to say that, but I can.
So we have snack.
The market goes down, there's somebody making a lot of money.
Yes, not me.
Me either. I hate the stock market.
That's his feed.
I'm buying real estate, I think. Yeah, there you go.
The video due to this streaming program.
It's all him. Yeah, it's his feed. We've tested three different lines.
Is the Wal-Mart building that's going up, is that close to your hotel? He sold the hotel. We... May have lost it. Were you happy about it? No, you fired it.
Let's try that.
We were good here tonight.
Okay. Tell me if... Test, test, one, two, three. Director Estrada, can you hear us?
I can hear... Sylvia, can you say something?
Test, one, two, three. Director Estrada, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Perfect. So, okay, that's what we'll do. We'll just... You've cut your video feed, and it seems that is working, so we'll go ahead. I'll get Director, the other directors, and then we'll go back on. Just give us a few seconds.
Sylvia, Sylvia, what's the number to call? Because I'm... I can hear you, but then you cut off also, and I can see that you're talking, but I can't hear, so...
Okay. I will send... I'll send you the phone number via Zoom on the message there.
Okay, thank you.
I understand.
How are we doing? I'm doing this whole thing without caffeine, by the way, just so you know.
Do you need me to get some?
No, no, no. No. No, no, no.
Or your green smoothie?
I had one of those, yeah. It's... The remnants of it are in the trash can up in front of the building.
Daughter is a big believer in green for breakfast.
Well, there's not much sugar in it, right? Yeah. Because smoothies are high in sugar, which is the problem, I think.
Director Estrada, I show that you jumped off Zoom. Can we confirm that you are on Zoom?
I'm here. I'm just switching to home audio.
Okay. Well, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. He's just going to do a sec... He's okay for now, but we're going to do a backup line for him. I think we can proceed.
Okay. Well, you're waiting for his vote, so go ahead.
Okay. So let me go back. We had a motion and a second, and we were in the middle of roll call. President Powell said yes. Director, Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Thank you. Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. That passed. A little tangle up there. This brings us... Oh, we'll have a nice challenge here, Sylvia. This brings us to the action calendar, and I... Because of adjacent property interests that I have, I'm going to be recusing on items 8A and 8D. So I would maybe we can take those first, and I can leave the dice, and then we'll resume with 8B and C once I come back. And if it's possible, Vice President Estrada would take the gavel, so to speak. So if our comms don't work, then somebody in here will have to do it. But let's try that one. I'm going to leave. Let me know. So if you could just take both of them, so I don't have to leave twice.
Sure. We can do that.
Thank you.
Go ahead and turn on the mic.
Should Director Estrada comfortable? Should we go with Director Nelson?
Vice President Estrada? Can you hear us? Why don't we have Director Nelson take the gavel?
Okay. So let's start with item 8A, Authorization to Solicit the Bids for Construction of the Monroe Street Trunk Sewer. So take it away.
Thank you. Good morning, President... Well, good morning, members of the board.
Thanks for the elevation.
Script adjustment.
Nice script.
And fellow staff, my name is Don Wilcox. I'm a senior sanitation engineer in the engineering department. The purpose of this board item is to request authorization to solicit bids for construction of the Monroe Street trunk sewer. Would you like the presentation, or do you have any specific questions I could answer?
I would... Yeah, I just have some questions about the funding sources. It looks like we may be splitting this, and I was just wondering on the breakdown on the funding sources.
Well, we have... The total project cost is $2,675,016, and we've got two funding sources. One grant from USDA in the amount of $1,319,900, and one from the Indian Health Service for $1,349,400. So it'll be fully funded through grants.
Terrific. And how long is this pipeline?
It's 4,100 linear feet, so just under about .8 miles.
Okay. All right, great. I'm good. Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Let's take a roll call vote.
Vice President Estrada?
Star six.
Are you still on the line with us, Director Estrada?
No, I can't do that.
Okay. We'll go... Well, no. And Director... President Powell has recused. Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. And then let's move on to item 8D, the approval and authorization for the general manager to execute a construction contract with Jones Brothers Construction as the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $3.8 million and change for the lateral replacement project, and approve some additional expenditures for a total of $4.61 million.
I'm David.
David, morning.
Morning. All right. As you mentioned, the purpose of this item is to reject the bid received from Hemant Manufacturing Company Incorporated, DBA Genesis Construction, as non-responsive, and authorize the general manager to execute a construction contract with Jones Brothers Construction in the amount of $3,879,963 for the construction of irrigation lateral 11964-75 replacement project, Phase 1. Request also includes a professional service agreement with Leon Rowe as the engineer of record to provide engineering services during construction, and Task Order Number 8 for Geotechnical Engineering to NV5 in the amount of $93,847 and $197,120, respectively. Total cost of this request is, which includes a 5% contingency and an expenditure for Imperial Irrigation District to hold 13 power poles, as well as inspection and project management, is $4,610,430. The project advertised for bids April 18th of this year, and bids were open on May 9th. We received seven bids. The lowest bid was submitted by Genesis. However, it omitted experience, information required for the project bid documents. They're required to demonstrate that they have performed a project of this magnitude in the last five years, and they could not do so. Therefore, staff is recommending that we reject that bid as non-responsive. And the next lowest bid was submitted by Jones in the amount of $3,879,969. Project is budgeted in the current fiscal year capital improvement budget in the amount of $750,000. It is a multi-fiscal year project, and the balance will be budgeted in the upcoming fiscal year. This project is also one of the project that was recently awarded loan funding from the Department of the Interior through the bipartisan infrastructure law, and my understanding is the rate for that loan will lock in today or at the point of award. And without all taking questions.
And that rate's, what, 1.875?
I believe it's 1.875. It varies depending on...
Where do you lock it?
Yeah. This project is in dire need if, you know, MECA is going to expand and have some low-cost housing or apartments over there, and so...
How long is this irrigation lateral?
This reach is about 8,800 feet.
8,800?
Mm-hmm.
It's about a mile and a half.
Yeah. So I was trying to compare it to the last item in terms... It just seemed like it was fairly costly. So what... Is there anything driving the cost besides just the replacement of the pipe?
Well, the obvious economic situation certainly is driving the cost. The cost of petroleum plays a big role in the construction or fabrication of PVC right now, and there's a resin shortage with respect to PVC. I think that's the biggest driver for this one.
And then we're moving some poles, is that?
We're holding poles. We have to pay ID to hold the poles while we do the work.
Okay.
It's in close proximity to the trench.
Got it. Okay.
I have a quick question. I think I had asked at one point that on some of these larger contracts that we try to include the minority or women-owned, you know, DBA firms, and I didn't see it, I might have missed it, but do you have that information?
You know, I apologize. We did include it in the bid advertisement. I do not have the information with respect to how they complied with that.
Can you get that?
Sure.
I do like the fact that it's a local company, and, you know, that's always good to support local business, so...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. So with that, we have a motion and a second. We'll call for a roll call vote.
Vice President Estrada?
And Don's back.
Ah, back. How can you be back if you haven't been up here?
We're on item 8B.
Good. 8B.
Now I can say it. Good morning, President Powell, members of the board and staff. Again, my name is Don Wilcox, Senior Sanitation Engineer. The recommendation before you is a revision of the requested action that adds soft costs to the professional services agreement request for a total project authorization. The purpose of this board item is to request authorization for the general manager to execute the attached professional services agreement with DUC in the amount of $683,981 for the design of the lift station 5511 capacity upgrade project, and authorize additional soft costs in the amount of $116,019 for a total project authorization of $800,000. And would you like your presentation, or could I answer questions?
I think it's a great project, and certainly helps out the city of MECA, and I'd move approval.
I'll second.
Community of MECA, right? Yeah, good. I didn't have... I don't need a city of presentation. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Should we attempt a roll call vote?
To the action calendar and I because of adjacent property interests that I have, I'm going to be recusing on items eight A and eight D. So I would maybe, maybe we can take those first and I can leave the dice and then we'll resume with eight B and C. Once I come back and if, if, if it's possible, Vice President Estrada would take the gavel, so to speak. So if our comms don't work, then somebody in here will have to do it, but let's try that one. I'm going to leave. Let me know. So if you could just take both of them so I don't have to leave.
Go ahead and turn on the mic. Vice President Estrada. Can you hear us? Why don't we have Director Nelson take the gavel?
So let's start with item eight A authorization to solicit the bids for construction of the Monroe Street trunk sewer. So take it away.
Good morning, President. Well, good morning, members of the board.
Thanks for the elevation.
And fellow staff, my name is Don Wilcox. I'm a senior sanitation engineer in the engineering department. The purpose of this board item is to request authorization to solicit bids for construction of the Monroe Street trunk sewer. Would you like your presentation or do you have any specific questions I could answer?
I would, yeah, I just have some questions about the funding sources. It looks like we may be splitting this and I was just wondering on the breakdown on the funding sources.
Well, we have, the total project cost is $2,675,016 and we've got two funding sources. One grant from USDA in the amount of $1,319,900 and one from the Indian Health Service for $1,349,400. So it'll be fully funded through grants.
Terrific. And how long is this pipeline?
It's 4,100 linear feet, so just under about .8 miles.
Okay, right, great. I'm, I'm good. Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Let's take a roll call vote.
Vice President Estrada. Are you still on the line with us, Director Estrada? Okay, we'll go, well, no, and Director, President Powell has recused, Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you. And then let's move on to item eight D. The approval and authorization for the general manager to execute a construction contract with Jones Brother Construction as the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of 3.8 million and change for the lateral replacement project and approve some additional expenditures for a total of 4.6 million. David, morning.
Morning. All right, as you mentioned, the purpose of this item is to reject the bid received from Hemet Manufacturing Company Incorporated DBA Genesis Construction as non-responsive and authorize the general manager to execute a construction contract with Jones Brothers Construction in the amount of $3,879,963 for the construction of irrigation lateral 11964-75 replacement project phase one. Request also includes a professional service agreement with Leon Rowe as the engineer of record to provide engineering services during construction and task order number eight for geotechnical engineering to NV5 in the amount of $93,847 and $197,120 respectively. Total cost of this request is, which includes a 5% contingency and a expenditure for Imperial Irrigation District to hold 13 power poles as well as inspection and project management is $4,610,430. The project advertised for bids April 18th of this year and bids were open on May 9th. We received seven bids. The lowest bid was submitted by Genesis. However, it omitted the experience, information required for the project bid documents. They're required to demonstrate that they have performed a project of this magnitude in the last five years and they could not do so. Therefore, staff is recommending that we reject that bid as non-responsive. And the next lowest bid was submitted by Jones in the amount of $3,879,969. Project is budgeted in the current fiscal year capital improvement budget in the amount of $750,000. It is a multi-fiscal year project and the balance will be budgeted in the upcoming fiscal year. This project is also one of the project that was recently awarded loan funding from the Department of the Interior through the bipartisan infrastructure law and my understanding is the rate for that loan will lock in today or at the point of award. And without all taking any questions.
And that rates what, 1.875?
I believe it's 1.875. It varies depending on.
What are you looking at?
Yeah, this project is in dire need if, if, you know, Mecca is going to expand and have some low-cost housing or apartments over there and so.
How, how long is this irrigation lateral?
This reach is about 8,800 feet.
8,800. Yeah, so I was, I was trying to compare it to the last item in terms, it just seemed like it was fairly costly. So what, is there anything driving the cost besides the, just the replacement of the pipe?
Well, the obvious economic situation certainly is driving the cost. The cost of petroleum plays a big role in the, in the construction or fabrication of PVC right now. And there's a resin shortage with respect to PVC. I think that's the biggest, biggest driver for this one.
And then we're, we're moving some poles, is that?
We're holding poles. We have to pay ID to hold the poles while we do the work.
Okay, got it.
It's in close proximity to the trench.
Got it, okay.
I have a quick question. I think I had asked at one point that on some of these larger contracts that we try to include the minority or women-owned, you know, DBA firms and I didn't see it, I might have missed it, but do you have that information?
You know, I apologize. We did include it in the, in the bid advertisement. I do not have the information with respect to how they, how they complied with that.
Can you get that?
Sure.
I do like the fact that it's a local company and, you know, that's, that's always good to support local business.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so with that, we have a motion and a second. We'll call for a roll call vote.
Vice President Estrada. Vice President Estrada. Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
With that, I'll turn the dais back over to President Powell.
And Don's back.
Ah, back. How can you be back if you haven't been up here?
We're on item eight B.
Good, eight B.
Now I can say, good morning, President Powell, members of the board and staff. Again, my name is Don Wilcox, Senior Sanitation Engineer. The recommendation before you is a revision of the requested action that adds soft costs to the professional services agreement request for a total project authorization. The purpose of this board item is to request authorization for the general manager to execute the attached professional services agreement with DUC in the amount of $683,981 for the design of the lift station 5511 capacity upgrade project and authorize additional soft costs in the amount of $116,019 for a total project authorization of $800,000. And would you like your presentation or could I answer questions?
I think it's a great project and certainly helps out the city of Mecca and I'd move approval.
I'll second. Community of Mecca, right? Yeah, good. I didn't have, I don't need a city of presentation. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Should we attempt a roll call vote?
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada. It says he's still having a hard time picking up audio. Okay, so we'll go ahead and skip him. Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Okay, four zero.
So that passed four zero and as reluctant as I would be to put words in anyone's mouth, I have a feeling Vice President Estrada would have been in favor of that one. Good. C then. Eight C.
Okay, the recommendation before you is a revision of the requested action that adds soft costs to the professional services agreement request for a total project authorization. The purpose of this board item is to request authorization for the general manager to execute the attached professional services agreement to CDM Smith for the design of the water reclamation plant number 10 Headworks Improvement Project in the amount of $1,482,512 and authorize additional soft project costs in the amount of $313,251 for a total project authorization of $1,795,763. I can provide a presentation if you like or answer questions.
Okay, so the, according to the write-up, the estimated construction for the new Headworks Improvement is 19.4 million. So this is a pretty significant.
Yes, it is.
Sorry, Don, just for the board's better understanding, could you maybe explain what the purpose of the design and construction project would be, what benefits accrue?
Right, well, you know, just as some background, a Headworks project is a facility that receives the incoming raw wastewater. So its purpose is to remove the inorganic materials such as rags, grit, stones, golf balls.
Fleshable wives.
And other material large enough for the screens or grit removal equipment to, to get it, so. It's a, you know, very complex facility because it has, you know, a lot of different mechanical parts or equipment and, you know, several potential failure modes. And as you can imagine, it's a highly odorous and corrosive environment. So the purpose really of this project is the existing facility is, on average, about 35 years old. Equipment range is anywhere from either new to, you know, almost 30 years. I think 22 years is like the oldest I saw for the pumps. And equipment, you know, some of the equipment is so old that the manufacturers or the suppliers like no longer have shop drawings for it. So either we have to go in ourselves and, you know, try to find that information to give them to especially fabricate parts. Or we've, our machine shop has actually had to go in sometimes on occasion and make their own parts because either parts are just not available, they're, the lead time is, you know, really high, you know, into the months. And, you know, or they're just extremely expensive. And there, you know, there's, you know, I've stated, there's some mechanical issues throughout the Headworks, but there's also operational. So right now, we don't have emergency storage in the facility. It's just strictly a pass-through, you know, and it's susceptible to power outages, which unfortunately is what happened or happened back in September of 2020, created a situation where we had a sanitary sewer overflow on Cook Street because there was just very little detention time in that facility. So the purpose of this project or one of the key drivers of this project is to add 30 minutes of emergency storage to give staff time to react to, you know, figure out what has happened and get the, the process back in operation. And there's other operational issues like flow measurement. Yes, we do have flow measurement into individual treatment facilities downstream of the Headworks. But that also includes return flows that come back to the Headworks, so we don't have an accurate measurement of what's really coming into the Headworks. So this project will add flow, flow measurement up or at the Headworks facility itself, so we can measure what's actually coming in. And then there's also issues with flow splitting to the three, individual three secondary treatment plants. Staff has to manually go out and operate the gates themselves rather than having it as an automated process. Just because the, when the system is in automation, it doesn't direct flow properly, so they have to go out and manually do it. And that's really important to maintain the secondary treatment process, especially when they're trying, probably getting a little too detailed, but when they're building up solids in the basin, they need to be very careful about making sure that the flow measurement or the flow into each plant is equal. So the only way to do that is manually. So the purpose of this project is to help solve those issues both operationally and mechanically and you know, help us, you know, give us 30 minutes of emergency storage to help prevent any SSOs. So this is a project that's been in the making for, I'd say, many years since I've been back in sanitation. I think I first started talking to staff about it in probably 2017 or 2018. You know, where we just first started developing, you know, what they would like to see, what we would like to see and, you know, what we could potentially fund. So you know, here it is, 2022, you know, the project or the facility is just getting older, parts are not going to be available, so.
You know, I, I had a personal tour of that Headworks at Warp Town and things looked pretty new to me. But that was, the, the general manager gave me a tour and that was Tom Levy, who was the general manager. It was in the 90s. It was probably 35 years ago, but it looked pretty good at the time, you know, but apparently things wear out.
I had a tour there two years ago and it, it looked pretty new to me.
Yeah, yeah, I know, mine was in the 90s. It was a long time ago. But, yeah, I mean, I haven't been there since, but. So, so our concern is obviously we don't want the overflows. Those are pretty serious, right? In terms of all kinds of public problems and fines.
And this is our major treatment facility, collecting flows basically from the Central Valley here. Seven and Four are a little bit more remote.
With brand-new Headworks in the last seven years?
At Seven and Four?
Yeah, those are.
Yeah, Seven and Four.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's time. And so I, I do think it's necessary to proceed with design and then as far as construction funding, we'll have to take a look at that when the design is complete.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, no, it's a big project. Yeah, I don't have a sense of it as far as how old it is now. I mean, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea for us since it's so close to. What was to go look at? In 2017, what was the, what did we earmark as, as the cost of this? 10?
Probably has.
I'm sorry, I don't have that information. I don't really recall.
Well, I remember spending $26 million, I, I can't, on, on the Headworks at Warp Seven and Four, maybe it was 26 a piece. I can't remember if it was 26 a piece or 26 for.
It was 13 and a half to 14 million each, depending on the location. So the total project cost was about 28 million.
There you go.
Plus we did some off-site improvements at Warp Seven. So you know, if we were looking at, say, you know, $20,12 of 13 and a half million today's dollars, we, and given the, the market conditions, yes, the project of this magnitude would be about $25 million. But we're working with CDM Smith, the consultant that we're asking to be approved today. You know, they have ideas about how to greatly reduce that cost. With respect to the Warp Four and Seven projects, those were very, very deep structures. This, you know, the intent initially for this project was to be similar to Four and Seven because staff is very familiar with it. It works really well. And, you know, that just to standardize operations, we'd like to see something similar. But one big item that we're going to look at in the design phase is reducing the depth of the, of the equipment size, especially the screens, because those are what are really deep with at Warp's Four and Seven. So reducing the screen costs reduces significantly the amount of excavation that we would have to do. And that's going to reduce the project cost and we think we can get it down to, you know, what we are now projecting at probably around the $19 million range, so.
Sold, 19. You'd lock it in today. All right, well, we, of course, we won't know that until we get a few more steps done.
That's correct.
Yeah. All right, so I think that was a good explanation. You know, personally, I would like actually to, to look at this. I mean, I guess I don't need to look at it before we, we vote. I mean, I, I don't have any reason to question what you're saying. But I feel like it's been a while for me, so I don't know if someone could help me set up a, a quick tour of that facility.
Okay, sir, we can take that for sure.
Yeah, maybe one other director if someone else wants to do.
I'll set up at different times.
Yeah.
I, I toured.
Yeah, I mean, I've been there, but it's been a while. And I've been at, at the site, but not in, at the Headworks lately. Okay, great. So.
I'd move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll second. There's a motion and there's a second to approve. Let's do a roll call vote.
So Vice President Estrada has left Zoom and he is driving over here, so we could do, we don't have to do a roll call vote for this vote since there's no one on.
Okay, so this is just us then? Okay. Go ahead. Oh, well then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Right, Don, thank you. Good presentation.
Thanks, Don.
E. Ah, Zoe, good morning. Go ahead.
Salt and nutrient. So good morning, President Powell, members of the board. Today's item before you is to request approval to execute a professional services agreement with West Yost Associates in the amount of $2,684,112 to implement the Coachella Valley Salt and Nutrient Management, Coachella Salt and Nutrient Management Plan Development Work Plan that was approved by the regional board and to execute the first supplement to the memorandum of understanding between the Coachella Valley Salt and Nutrient Management Plan Agencies to establish the, the cost share for this work. So I don't have a presentation today, but I do want to briefly go over the main drivers for this work. In 2009, the State Board adopted the recycle water policy to be able to streamline the permitting process for recycled water projects. At the time, one of the main requirements of, of this new policy was that salts and nutrients be managed on a basin-wide basis through the development of salt and nutrient management plans. The policy did not provide at that time for a process for local regional boards to approve or reject plans, but that was brought into the policy in the 2018 amendments. So on February 19th of 2020, we got, we received formal findings from our Colorado River Basin Regional Board. And they took the approach that the provided findings that the Coachella Valley Salt and Nutrient Management Plan that we had submitted in 2015 was found to be insufficient in some areas in that rather than rejected through resolution, they wanted to encourage us to begin that process again. I, I do want to recognize that there are seven, in addition to Coachella Valley Water District, there are seven water and wastewater agencies that came together to work with the regional board to put together this development work plan to provide a path in the scope of work to develop a new salt and nutrient management plan that could be approved and adopted by our regional board. The other big driver of this work is when both our Mission Creek and India Subbase and Alternative Plans were approved, Department of Water Resources staff, one of their key findings in both plans was that they wanted us to find, begin the process and find a way to incorporate an approved salt and nutrient management plan into our water management plan documents that we use to comply with SIGMA. So Coachella Valley Water District, on behalf of the, I'm going to say CBS NMP Agencies, through a formal bid process, requested proposals, sorry, request for proposals of to implement the development work plan. We received, received two bids. Those were scored collaboratively between the agencies. And then we brought the firms in for interviews. I do want to note that cost was 30% of the scoring. And the agencies decided to select based on the scoring, West Yost and Associates. So today, in summary, I'm asking for the authorization to move forward to allow the general manager to execute the professional services agreement with West Yost and Associates as well as to end, supplement, do the first supplement to the memorandum of understanding to establish the cost share between the agencies. With that, I'm happy to take any questions on this item.
So I have, I have a question. So you went through the competitive process, but is, can you talk more about how confident you are that Yost will address the deficiencies that were outlined and were those identified in the RFP? And how comfortable are you that they will address those concerns?
So West Yost is formerly known as Waldermouth and they have been key and central to the development of salt and nutrient management plans in the Santa Ana region. They bring a highly qualified team. In addition to that, they've supplemented the team with Tess Dunham, who has local experience working on the Coachella Valley Irrigated Lands General Order as well as being one of the central players in the Salt and Nutrient Management Plan in Central Valley. The team that they put together includes the team that is doing communication in the Anza Borrego as they move to adjudication. Part of the salt and nutrient management process is to engage all local stakeholders that might be interested or might be salt contributors, so that portion of the team also brings a lot of qualifications in terms of engaging municipalities, different sectors that may be impacted by the development of this plan.
Thank you.
So I have a number of questions, Zoe. Of the, of the seven evaluators, were those all CVWD or was that the consortium of districts that did that? That was presented in our packet?
So the CBWD acted as the procurement agency, but the scoring was done by the Coachella Val, Coachella Valley Salt and Nutrient Management Plan Agency. So that includes Mission Springs Water District, Desert Water Agency, Coachella Water Authority, India Water Authority, Mioma Dunes, City of Palm Springs, Valley Sanitary, don't want to leave them out. So each agency had a representative scoring and then subsequently participating in the interviews.
Yeah, so that was a, that was a impressive that, I mean, all down the line, they all chose Yost, so that, that was pretty good. What are the significant insufficient areas that the regional board didn't, why they didn't approve our original salt nutrient plan? And how is this process going to address those insufficiencies?
So the, I'm going to list the major items in no particular order. The first one was that we, that the plan that we submitted in 2015 did not spell out with sufficiency, the monitoring program that we would have in place to look at trends in salt and nutrients to be able to calculate things like assimilative capacity. That has already been addressed because the regional board approved the monitoring plan that is going to be used for those purposes. They also thought that there were a lot of data gaps in the shallow aquifer. And so therefore it was hard to understand the true distribution of salts and nutrients across the basin. That again, we have a plan to do. The other. major finding was that they believed that we had not properly considered all sorts of salt, um, loading to the basin in particularly imported water. So how does this new work plan address that? We're going to be developing a water quality model, uh, that builds on our existing, um, groundwater flow models that we use for water management planning, uh, in that will have sources for, um, sources and concentrations for all sorts of loading, uh, potential loading sources. They found, um, for that and other reasons, they, they said that our anti-degradation analysis was not adequate, so we've laid out a process in the work plan to do that. And then this goes back again to the modeling, they felt like that the, the model that we use, which was a spreadsheet model, was too coarse to make, to allow them to make decisions about permitting, et cetera, for assimilative capacity, because it was one, uh, mixing model per zone where, you know, kind of black box engineering, you, like a reactor. So the new approach with a groundwater quality model will allow us to look at both, uh, you know, vertical and lateral distribution of salts and nutrients. So I think it'll provide a better way to communicate about the conditions of the basin and look at, uh, potential impacts, both the benefits of the things that we're doing and, and provide, uh, greater transparency as we all work together, uh, towards an approved plan.
All right, thanks, and then, um, how, what, what's the percentage breakdown? It probably had it and I missed it, but, uh, in the, in the whole plan is, um, the percentage breakdown of split, how, how does that work? What is it based on, area or, um, water importations? How, how is that broken out?
So the, the percentages, um, are provided, if you're interested in it, uh, by agency, that's provided in the, uh, su, first supplement to the MOU, but I'm going to focus on CBWD's portion, which is forty-five point five percent of the total cost. Uh, I do want to point out, this is almost a five, five-year project, and that schedule has been approved by the regional board. How we came up with that forty-five point five percent was by looking, uh, at a number of elements. So size, uh, is one of them in the form of number of sanitation connections, number of domestic connections, whether an agency, uh, is, um, a groundwater sustainability agency, since that adds additional, uh, requirements and responsibilities, uh, for basin management, whether an agency is recycling water, uh, because that is a big driver for, um, the development of salt and nutrient management, as well as whether an agency, uh, is, uh, a groundwater manager importing, uh, water. Obviously, Coachella Valley Water District has, uh, activities, uh, is the largest agency, uh, in the valley, as well as participating in every single one of those activities.
Okay.
You know, those are all good questions, I've pretty much covered all of mine, I just comment that impressive that you can have eight agencies that are agreeing. I'm assuming they're agreeing, you know, so, so we're going to authorize our general manager to execute this, but, but then the other seven are going to do the same thing, right? And assuming they all get a positive result, they're good, what happens if somebody bails out and doesn't do this?
So, I, I, I want to start answering that question by saying that we now have an incredible track record of working collaboratively. So I, I have a lot of confidence that what we've, you know, negotiated, that the agencies will, uh, do their part. And, uh, you know, for something like the, um, alternative plan update, uh, we've just wrapped up the billing and, you know, everything's gone just swimmingly. But the supplement does, uh, the MOU and the supplement does establish that if an agency decides not to participate, they would, they would be subject, uh, to have to pay any costs that have been accrued up to that time, but there are, you know, for everybody to agree, there had to be some ways for folks to get out of this if they don't like, uh, how it's going. The, the other thing that I mentioned, would like to mention to the board is that we are very actively, for everything salt and nutrient management plan related, we are very actively looking for grant funding, um, things like, uh, technical support service from the Department of Water Resources for well drilling. We recently submitted an application to USPR, uh, for the development of the model, the water quality component of the model in Mission Creek. So that, you know, there's a lot of activity to try to manage the cost of this project, to find, uh, funding sources, but I have a lot of confidence that once, uh, everybody has agreed to this in principle, that they will execute it, and that there's just tremendous benefit to all of the, our water management and wastewater activities for all to participate and have this be a successful process.
Yeah.
And, and I would only add that, um, it's, it's not a matter of being in the MOU, but not the first supplement. If they wanted to not do the first supplement, they'd have to get out of the MOU as a whole, so it's not like they can pick and choose.
No, I, you know, kudos. I'm optimistic, I guess, I, I mean, I haven't been in the room, but, um, we made it this far, so.
Yeah.
Impressive.
Zoe, I just wanted to say that thank you for taking the lead on this. I mean, I, I think you talk pretty modestly when you say this is a collaborative thing. I think that, uh, you, you've taken the initiative of this, and, and I thank you for that, and, and, um, this is very important for the valley, and, and, uh, this is probably a cost that's probably going to be on here from, from now on. I can see it popping up every five years, but, um, I, I, I move approval.
I'll, I'll second, and, and Zoe, uh, just a quick question. So the state, DWR, um, gave out, I think they were giving out seven point six million to GSAs. Were those just in the critically overdrafted areas that were deficient? Or, um, and would we become available at some point for some additional funding from the state for, um, GSAs and maybe programs like this?
So the seven points, uh, the seven point six million thereabouts is part of, uh, Prop sixty-eight implementation, or it's, uh, Sustainable Groundwater Management, uh, round one. Round one, uh, when the guidelines came out, it was strictly for critically overdrafted, not just with deficiencies, because it's meant for implementation. There is a round two that's supposed to come out this fall, which will be competitive for both critically overdrafted and non-critically overdrafted. And as we did with, um, with, uh, the previous planning, uh, we will be going after, um, funds under that, under that round.
Okay, is this a program that would, would fit into that round two?
We will need to wait and see what the, uh, what the, what the guidelines, otherwise PSP looks like. But, um, because this has a modeling component or decision support tool, the trend that we've been seeing is that in implementation, it's about projects rather than planning, but when you are developing, um, decision support tools, then they've generally allowed a carve-out for that, so I am hopeful.
All right, great, thanks, Zoe.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Zoe. Finance, F, F, F is for finance.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. I didn't quite catch your last comment, Mike. So I, we have before you the, uh, the extension of the agreement with Bank of the West for a line of credit, downsizing it to five, fifty million dollars. Tried to be as thorough as I could in the report, and, uh.
You got a report, you know, I, if, I don't know if we want to hear the reporting, but, uh, we didn't really utilize much of it, right? So we got, we got that, uh, hold, that holding cost this year.
Yeah.
I mean, what was that, was what, point?
Point, point two percent.
Point two percent?
Yeah.
How much of that did we pay, I mean, in dollars?
So if, whenever we didn't have use of the facility, we were paying that in full on seventy-five million, so a hundred and fifty thousand a year was our cost, and the first year or so, we didn't draw on it at all. And, you know, thinking back to when we first, um, went for obtaining this line of credit, it was, I believe it was January of two thousand nineteen when we started, and, um, we had talked about, should we size it as seventy-five million or a hundred million?
Right, I remember the hundred, yeah.
Yeah, and so, we've learned a lot since then on how we can utilize these kind of funds and how a lender is willing to let us utilize these funds. And the, the generalized plan back then was to use this as a comprehensive bridge financing tool across all funds to help bridge the gap of, uh, early costs associated with projects, as we were waiting on low-cost loans and grants to be coming in from these various agencies. And we were very frustrated with, you know, having to wait on moving forward, or the board was, staff was, on having to wait on moving forward on critical project needs as you're waiting for financing to come in. So the vision was to provide that bridge financing tool, so you could get on with it and get work done.
Makes sense, yeah.
So the reality was, it was harder to access those funds than we realized. And also, uh, some of these, uh, low-cost loan programs like USDA has the stipulation that you cannot receive their loan funds, and you're, till you're completely done with the project, that, that's like three years. These funds aren't really meant to be used as a three-year kind of borrowing, it's more of like a year at a time, though it can be longer. So, really, the only, um, fund and program we have been borrowing on this from has been with the original need, the original urgency need with the two WIFIA projects, the, uh, North Indio Project and the Coachella Canal. And right now, we have about nine point nine million that we've currently are borrowing on that. But as we, uh, worked on this internally and with our financial advisor, Darren Hodge, by the way, from PFM, he's on, on the line, if you have any further questions for him. But we kind of hashed it out and said, really, fifty million is the more realistic number, and.
Fifty?
Fifty, you know, we brought it down to fifty, and.
But that, 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 that is a new contract though, right?
No, this is, this is an amendment to the existing one.
But in the amendment, in the amendment, does it say? Because I don't, you keep saying that, but I don't think it was in the, in the first contract about the, um, where's this right here? Where it, where it talks about, um, rates.
On what we're paying?
No, rates on, on what we, uh, the rates, we have to, to, um, establish a certain rate for our customers.
Oh, you're, you're talking about to, um, assure that we set the appropriate rates to cover debt service?
That's correct.
Yes.
Now, that, that was not in the first one.
I believe, well.
That wasn't like an understanding, but that was not in the, 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 the.
Yes, one of the, and one of the things this does is to bring this agreement in conformity with our master resolution, which has such requirements.
So that, you know, so that's tying our hands.
Well, it's.
I mean, when you put it in a contract, it's tying, it's tying our hands, right? I mean, we're going to put this down on paper that says we have to have this rate, period. So, I mean, you're, you're, you're taking, to me, it seems like, and tell me if I'm wrong, because maybe I'm wrong,
Well.
but you're, you're, you're taking the, this board and saying, you, taking away our choice by, by signing this, new.
Realistically, if you were to do, uh, borrowings of any significant financial instrument, you're going to be have, having a minimum debt service coverage requirement of one point two five, uh, per year. And as we have been discussing for the past probably year and a half, what's more appropriate for us to target is a little bit higher at one and a half. That's why we've often referenced one and a half as what we're seeking to, because we're not cutting such a fine line that we're potentially violating one of our covenants. So, so you, you may look at it tying your hand in one sense, but if you're going to be doing the long-term borrowing, you're, you're handcuffing yourself on that. You're, you're basically committing to having funds available in the short, shorter term so that, uh, the lender has a reasonable assurance they're going to get paid. Now, one of the features that we had in the old agreement, which is what was stymying us from accessing the funds, was that infamous seven-year requirement on all funds, on OpEx, and we were having a really difficult time with that provision. And that was part of the negotiations that took part, placed over the last five months or so, with the Bank of the West and their legal team and their finance team on eliminating that in its entirety and focusing more myopically on the debt service coverage requirement on a fund-by-fund basis, and then the fact that we have, uh, limited our access ability from all funds down to the three major funds which we're looking to potentially borrow on, domestic, stormwater, and sanitation, which coincidentally are very strong funds in general. So that, that's helped us get to where we are today. Darren, I don't know if you can.
Could I, could I ask one, just a, just a follow-on to Anthony's question? Is, when you're computing the ratio, are you looking at the full commitment of fifty million, or are you looking at the amount of the draw?
The, the ratio of.
Yeah, the debt coverage ratio, is the debt, what is, what's the number in the ratio? Is it the full commitment of fifty million, or is it the nine-point, whatever that we have outstanding?
I'm getting a text from Darren, so Darren is on the line, and Darren, I'm going to ask him to try to speak, he cannot hear us at all.
Okay, and my second part of that question is, i- if it's the full commitment amount of fifty million, then would, would we be able to consider a smaller number such as twenty-five million?
So.
To reduce the commitment?
So my understanding of the, the, the debt service coverage commitment is based upon the debt service in the funds.
Right, so it's the amount that's drawn, not the fifty million, but, but if we have a right to draw that fifty million whenever we want, it seems kind of reasonable that they would count the whole fifty million in the debt coverage ratio.
Hold on just a second.
Carrie knows the answer.
Well, if you have it, come on.
I mean, I, I'm just thinking if we don't need it.
I'm just trying to get our financial advisor to chime in.
A twenty-five instead of a fifty or some other number.
Sorry, so when they're computing the debt service coverage ratio, they're taking in our net revenues, which is usually your operating revenues, and excluding anything that's like a one-time revenue, and then dividing that over your operating expenses and your debt service for the year. So it depends on what we borrow, it's not technically the fifty million, so if we draw, for example, ten million that year, and it has like a, I'm just saying, ten years' payment, one, one million a year, that's included on the, on the, on the calculation. So it takes operating expenses.
So it's not the amount of the commitment, although maybe, maybe it includes that holding cost, because that is debt. Just, it's just, you haven't drawn on it.
What, what is the biggest, I mean, why, I mean, just tell me, why, what's the number one reason why you're doing this?
So that we can have flexibility at the onset of a project while we're awaiting the funding to come in from other sources, whether it be grants or loans, and so that we don't have to draw down reserves, which causes other issues.
But we already have this, we already have seventy-five.
No, we're, we're, we're changing it.
We're changing it down, but, but, but why, and what's the reason why we're changing it down?
We don't feel we need seventy-five million, so we're bringing it down to fifty.
But, but the terms of that seventy-five seem better than the new terms of the fifty.
The terms that we have now were set, um, I believe it was. The terms that we have now were set, I believe it was in January of two thousand nineteen.
Right, which are better terms than we're getting right now.
Well, it's very similar and we believe it's
But they're putting covenants that weren't in there before. They're putting covenants in this new that weren't in there before.
The covenants that you're speaking of are already in the master resolution and we're getting better alignment with the master resolution.
I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see the need to, to change this, to tell you the truth.
Well, it's not a matter of changing it. It's expiring in a, at the end of June. So either we extend it or we have to find some replacement instrument and there's, there's no way we're going to have anything that quickly. So we, like I say, we've been negotiating this for months.
So we did this in twenty nineteen and we only did it for three years?
For three years, yes.
And we only drew nine million out of the seventy?
When you, when you think about it, back then, we were asking for a three-year commitment. And when we got the rate on borrowed funds and non-borrowed funds, it was just spectacular. In fact, we really couldn't believe it. We think they actually maybe made a mistake. So we were paying, yes, point two of one percent on non-drawn funds. It's really an access feature.
And there's nothing
Should have borrowed more.
And there's nothing we, we want to borrow funds on.
And then, and then the, then the borrowed rate was eighty percent of the LIBOR rate, which today, plus, plus twenty, twenty-five basis points. And so today, it would be about one percent on, under the new terms, which are very similar to the terms of, of the existing agreement.
So Jeff, wouldn't any similar bridge loan source require a debt service obligation?
Absolutely. I mean, no, no lender is going to be giving us money without those kind of provisions.
For a private company.
So do we need fifty and can we go to twenty-five?
I don't remember.
Why, why?
Well, we
Why is it not a private company?
We believe fifty works best for handling the needs of these funds over the coming years.
Do we, so do we have an idea of what projects or funds might need this money, these short-term bridge funding? I mean, we overshot a little in the first good one by almost ten times.
Again, this, this was the recommendation of our financial advisor based upon looking at the needs of these three funds over the next three years.
Three years, yeah.
Yes.
So Jeff, just one final question from me. So the, the fee for the funds that have been approved but not drawn? Does that, does that fee change based on the amount drawn or is that a fixed fee?
That, that is fixed. That is always fixed. The, the part that fluctuates is the drawn, which is based upon currently now on LIBOR, the London Interbank Offering Rate, which is the rate that banks lend to each other at. And that's going away. And so that we're replacing that with a new one that is very similar in its features and amount. So the formula is eighty percent of that LIBOR or SOFR rate plus thirty-five basis points. So it's, right now, it's about one percent.
So, so, so for the next three years, we're going to have to set rates on, on a calculation of us potentially drawing on this fifty million, whether we do it or not. Is that right?
I don't think so.
No?
It doesn't go in, based on what Carrie said, it doesn't, that undrawn portion doesn't go into the debt calculation.
Then, then why, then why do you guys keep hammering that to us on, in our, in our study sessions?
Because that is about the other debt.
We only used nine million in the last three years.
Well, we have other debt.
We have other debt.
This is just the bridge loan.
Yeah. And, and really, they, when you think of the, the loan, it's not, it's not a true borrowing until you draw. So right now, we've drawn, we're sitting on a draw of nine point nine million, which is going to be repaid very soon. But the other amount, the non-drawn, you're, that's not, that's not like a loan. It's like, it's, it's funds available to be drawn in shorter order than if you were to go out and do a regular borrowing.
So you, so you don't have to maintain the debt coverage on, on, on the unused portion, on the portion that you didn't draw on?
Yeah, that, yes, that's great. What we're focused on is when you do draw, when you do have a draw, you're meeting the requirements for all the other debt in that fund.
Okay.
Okay, does that help?
Yeah, there's other, I mean, there's other debt facilities.
No, I know.
Yeah.
So, so Jeff, I want to go back to my question. I mean, maybe Darren should answer this. Would we be able to live with twenty-five million? I mean, first of all, would Bank of the West go? Would they be, can we adjust this number and still have a deal with Bank of the West? And, and, and why do we need fifty instead of twenty-five? I mean, what, what are these draws that we're anticipating over the next three years where we would actually use these funds?
If, besides the, the point two five, John, why, why would you want to change the, the amount when you have cheap money right now?
It just saves you sixty-two thousand a year in carrying costs.
Yeah, I understand, but
Correct.
For three years, so it's a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
But in two years, we needed a project where we needed the money and you had to go out and get it, that would cost us a lot more than this.
We'll find a way. We've got four hundred million in cash sitting in the frigging bank right now.
Yeah.
Come on. You know what I'm saying? I mean, so our, I know we have funds held by various
Can you answer this question if I just hold the phone up to the mic?
Yeah. We're not going to be pinched for cash.
Yeah.
So it says call up rand dime.
Steven text. Lifeline here. It saves you a hundred and eighty thousand dollars over three years. That's the answer. We didn't, we didn't even come close to using it. I mean, we're only using a third of the lower amount, so that's why.
That, that part doesn't bother me.
Okay, your, your concern is
Let's, let's see if it even works.
So Jeff, I'll try here. Is everyone able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I, I apologize. I'm having trouble with the Zoom audio. So as I understand, the question is, why the reduction to fifty million from seventy-five versus twenty-five million, say? And so the reason we reduced it to fifty is really just trying to make an incremental change from seventy-five to fifty. And as we were looking at the financial forecast for the, the various funds that we were running preliminarily, we identified over the next two to three years, potentially some needs in different funds that might benefit from drawing on the revolving line of credit versus using cash. And those amounts were anywhere from fifteen to twenty million on, on one single fund. And so we felt that twenty-five might be a little tight if we wanted to use it across the three different funds. And so we thought fifty million would give us that capacity. Now, if it turns out that we don't utilize the full fifty, we always have the option to go back to Bank of the West in the future and ask them, can we reduce the size of the facility even more and negotiate with them at that time? Hopefully that answers the question, though, in terms of why fifty versus twenty-five.
Yeah, it, it, it does. I mean, so after three years, we could come back and try to do a, a different deal?
Or we could do less in, in the middle of the three years.
Okay, but so when you look at our cash, I mean, the district has significant cash, right? I mean, in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So if this were a private business, you'd be like, why would, why would I need to pay these guys when I already have my own funds?
But as we've spoken about before, is we don't look at all cash as ready to be borrowed for any fund. We look at on a fund-by-fund basis.
I understand. Right, but even the funds we're talking about have a sick, domestic sanitation and stormwater all have good amounts of cash.
They do.
Yeah. So, so if we get into a bind and we, we wish we did fifty instead of twenty-five, you just use the funds that are already there, that we already have, right? Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure there's a cer- certain rotation of those funds in terms of, you know, how they're locked up in, in cash, but it's probably accessible.
I, I don't know. I, I get, you're, you guys are trying to err on, probably on the high side just so we don't get into a situation where we, we need it and we don't have it.
And, and Darren, maybe you could speak to this point also. I didn't include in the staff report. But whenever we are going through our credit analysis, just having this facility is helpful to us. Because I posed the question six months ago from Darren, said, hey, the board really doesn't like this Bank of the West thing because they don't like the, the, the features in it that are viewed to hamstring us and handcuff our, us from doing things. Can we just have this go away? And I was hearing immediately, no, no, no. This is actually helpful to have on hand. It's a, it's a plus for us.
Yeah, it's great if you need it.
Well, it, for lenders looking at, do you, do they want to lend money to CVWD, to ratings agencies that want to help them understand the risks and benefits? The fact that we have this current line of credit is viewed as a, a strength because it increases our financial flexibility.
Okay. Would, would Bank of the West be agreeable to if we did go in at a lower number than fifty?
Darren, can you? Can you address that? Hi, Darren, you still there?
I am, it was cutting out. I believe the board president was asking whether or not Bank of the West would be agreeable to modifying the loan size midway through. Is that correct, board president?
I think he's saying right now. Are you suggesting we do it right now?
No, if we just approve something lower today.
If we approve something lower today, we could certainly go back to Bank of the West and ask, ask them if they are amenable at the current terms to a lower amount. We could certainly do that.
Yeah, all right. All right, well, I mean, it's it's a lot of, we're, we're giving ourselves a lot of sort of headroom in this borrowing that we, we, it seems to me it's unlikely we'll use it. And even if, and if we need it, we have other means. That's how I see it. But I might be the only one that feels that way.
No, I, I, Jeff, I guess for me, I'm just trying to figure out if we just went through the budget for this, various funds. And I, for me, I'm trying to get a sense of whether, whether we're at the, the reserve limits or close to them and the different funds that, that we would, that we wouldn't want to dip below reserves. Is that, and, and is that, is that the calculation you made to get to the fifty million or?
That was, that was part of the consideration. We don't look at targets as eh, got there, yay. We're like, that's like the minimum we want to get to.
And so when, and so when you ran this for three years, looking at all the different projects, you said there's about fifty million in there that, that we would need to tap into, otherwise we
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have the CIP in front of me, but we have significant projects coming up in all three of these funds.
I, I, I think it's relatively cheap money to have around for, for, for three years. And I, I get what you're saying. The odds are probably more than likely that we won't use the whole fifty and we could probably get down to twenty-five, but I think the, the, the number that we're going to be paying is pretty low in that. Let's see what happens in a year.
Make your motion.
And then you can, and then you can say, I told you so.
Make your motion.
I wish I could have said it over the seventy-five and we're all drawing nine.
You, you were trying to.
Well, you did when we talked about a hundred. Well, really, we started talking about it with the finance committee first.
I just don't like the new deal.
All right, somebody needs to make a motion to do something here.
I'll make a motion to approve the item.
Uh-oh. Everyone's here, so the mics are working, I know that.
Well, what's the, what happens if you don't do it? Then the whole thing goes away?
We could approve a different amount and, and then it's subject to Bank of the West.
Yeah, well, if you don't, if you don't approve something, then our, our facility's expiring at the end of June.
But before you would adopt a different number, you'd have to go back to your bond counsel and your finance advisor and the bank to reconstruct what that amount will be and what the terms will be, right? You just can't adopt a day twenty-five thousand.
There, there, yes, there is no assurance that Bank of the West is going to say we'll agree to all the terms.
Decide a day twenty-five million because that's not part of what's structured.
Yeah, we've been, we've been working this for months and months.
You'd have to come back, that's all.
Yeah, and we have, it sounds like we have some time because it's, you said, end of June, right? So we have a little bit of time.
It is.
We're dealing with people that, that probably can get things done in a few days.
But, but so to give direction to your bond counsel, your financial advisor and your finance team, what, what is the direction to return something different or?
I'll, I'll second.
And if I could just remind the board that our June schedules for meetings are pretty important. We've got the rates for the first meeting and then we've got the budget for the second meeting.
Right, so we'd have to add it to one of those meetings.
Yes. With all the other issues and the closed sessions, those can be very, I mean, we've already talked about this for thirty minutes. And it doesn't seem like we're getting to a point where we're going to take any action.
Well, we, yeah, we have a motion. We have a motion in a second. So if we approve it at, as presented, what opportunities do we have to change it? You said we can midway through, we can change it? I mean, is that real?
It's speculation because we haven't done it, okay?
Yeah, well, maybe we bring this back.
The thing, the thing that we did accomplish three years ago is we established a ceiling at seventy-five million as opposed to a hundred million.
I get it.
And not accessing that
Right.
For a year was painful to us, but we knew that it was good to have
Yeah, a question for Jeff Fray. Let's say that this fails today, can we still bring it back in a different form next time?
Yes, so if this proposal does not pass, then you could direct your team, as I say, bond counsel, financial advisor, finance team to re, to, to construct a new proposed transaction.
Yeah.
And bring that back at a number that you would feel comfortable with.
It might pass today, I don't have a sense of it really, but
Yeah, it's, it's a lot more than just crossing out the amount fifty and writing a different
But it can, but it can be done. It just, it requires a negotiation.
It's just going to require a negotiation.
Between us and, and Bank of the West.
And so ne- next year at this time, you can, we can redo this.
I think at any point, we can go in and ask, would you consider lowering, lowering the dollar amount at the facility? I mean, that's what Darren said, I, that makes perfect sense. It doesn't mean it's going to happen overnight. It's not, doesn't mean that they are going to agree to do it at the same terms.
Okay, well, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, let's see how it's, no, it's like the roulette wheel. We don't know where it's going to land. All right, can, can we do a roll call vote just to, so we can see where we are?
President Powell?
I'm going to vote no.
Okay, Vice President Estrada?
I'll vote no.
Director Bianco? Okay, aye. Director Aguilar? And Director Nelson?
So I'll vote no and I would ask the staff to come back with a lower amount of twenty-five million and see what we can negotiate with Bank of the West.
So that would not require action, that's just direction from staff?
Exactly.
So, so Jeff, one other question. You said you're getting ready to pay off this existing draw in, in soon? Is that before June thirtieth?
That's, yes.
If it was going to get paid off.
Yes, it's getting paid off.
So we'll be clean by June thirtieth?
Yes.
All right, well, then that's nice.
Yes.
Okay, good. So we could take this up in August?
Uh, if we take it up in August, I don't know.
If we're clean?
It's a brand new negotiation, I guess.
No.
I mean, right now, we're just trying to.
Can we get a bridge for our bridge loan? I'm just kidding. All right. Let's try to bring it back in June. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. And Jeff, operations G. This is the nonpotable water agreement with Sunnylands.
Should be pretty easy. They're all talked out.
This one's peace cake. Okay, Olivia, good morning.
Oh, okay. Good morning. This is the nonpotable water agreement for the Annenberg Foundation Trust at Sunnylands. We're asking for approval and authorization of the general manager to execute the nonpotable water agreement for Sunnylands. Sunnylands has agreed to the terms of the standard nonpotable water agreement for the type A rate, which is right now one eighty-six ninety-five per acre foot, and the term to meet at least eighty percent of their total irrigation demand with nonpotable water. This is part of the nonpotable water system expansion from Warp Ten. Currently, we have lines on Cook and Portola and we intend to continue west on Frank Sinatra. And this is the bank, the backbone pipeline that's covered by the SRF loan that we approved in April for. This is one of nine future customers that would be included in that loan, that fund.
Great. Do we have a motion to approve?
So, second?
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Thank you.
It's so easy.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That passed five oh. We're always beaten up on finance these days. Let's see, so written communications, there was that one, and then we had the extra one that we got today that are in the packet and on our website. Then board member, member general comments, Director Nelson?
Yeah, had an interesting conversation with Ernest Conan, who's the regional director of the Bureau. And he, he was talking about the SAC River and the water coming out of Shasta. And it's interesting that historically, the lowest the river has run is sixty-eight hundred CFS. And this year, it's running at forty-five hundred CFS. So very, very low and, and there's Sacramento exchange contractors on, on the river who have a contract for sixty-five percent is their minimum deliveries. And they're at eighteen percent of their deliveries. So it's just extremely dry in the, in Shasta. Orville's a little bit higher, but I just thought that was kind of landmark in there as well. And yet it was snowing in Denver this last week, this last weekend. It's just the craziest thing, right? Which is not helping. I'll get into that later. But that's all I have. It's just for my comments.
Thank you, Director Aguilar. Director Bianca? Vice President Estrada?
Yeah, I'll just mention that tomorrow we have a big meeting with EPA, county, state. EPA is putting together a big roundtable meeting at the Torres Martinez Tribe at their admin building. I think they, they want to talk about some of the systems that, that they need to manage and we'll be there. Looking forward to it.
Good, good, yeah. So we had an interesting invitation, Jim, for traveling to Sacramento. I think we found out about it on Saturday morning. Is that right? That's first I heard of it. And we were supposed to be there yesterday. So the governor, you know, had a presentation about the drought yesterday and he invited water district general managers and board presidents to come up, but they forgot to tell us until, to do the weekend during the, anyways, we didn't go. Interesting, you know, I mean, there's, he's signaling, from what I could tell, that there will probably be mandatory restrictions coming, but that we're really trying to convince folks to do it without the mandatory and, which is good, right? I mean, we should do everything we can to conserve. We already implemented some additional conservation measures at CVWD that I think are, are logical, you know, and, and that's in addition to what we're already doing. We're doing so many things. I, I did want to bring up, you know, I mean, besides budget-based tiered rates, which I think are very effective in conservation, we also have these irrigation smart controllers that we provide to our domestic customers and, and to HOAs. And for your domestic customer, it's free of charge and we install it for you. So it's, why wouldn't you do it? I don't know that our utilization's all that good on those things. I, I don't know the percentage of our customers that have them, but is it even ten percent? I don't know. But, but that, there's a great opportunity there. I own a property in, in a Cal-Am, it's in San Diego area, Cal-American Water. I think it's a private company, right? Water, Water District.
That's true.
Cal-Am. And they have this irrigation smart controller that they were pushing by a company called Rachio, R-A-C-H-I-O. Wow. So it wasn't free, but you, you click a couple buttons on their website and you get a, a discount. And I think I ended up spending forty bucks for it. So I ordered one and I installed it this weekend over there. It's all, it's all on here. So I can, I can, it tells me when it's running. It, it tell, you know, it, it has really good weather data, so it has microclimates everywhere. And, you know, I could set it to, to run so I can say run on the days that I'm allowed to run it. And there it's, because my address is even, it's Monday, Thursday, and Saturday, and it has to run between like nine PM and nine AM or something like that. And so I just set it up and run. It's, and it asks you all these questions. It was very impressive, very impressive, like a whole light years ahead of the one that I have at my house here. We should look into it, is all I'm saying. I have no idea what they cost.
A hundred and twenty-nine ninety-nine with a twenty-nine ninety-nine enclosure.
And I, I bought the enclosure because they're designed for indoors and so I installed mine outdoors.
So who's paying the other money? The water district?
The water district did, yeah. So I ended up paying very little for this thing. But, and I had to install it myself. And it was designed to be hardwired, which makes things a little more difficult because a lot of people would have to hire an electrician to do that. But it does come with an adapter because you can run them, plug them in inside. And so I just put mine in the weather housing and put it outside with the, the adapter. It should be fine. I don't think it's a problem. But, but it's designed to be hardwired. Anyways, just put that out there.
I can give you an update on that because we are talking with them and we can talk about any rebates that we're working with.
Yeah. And, and the cool thing is, you know, I, I can, like, I, I may not be there to type things onto my controller, but somebody might say, oh, you know, you had a little runoff on your, on your, on your front yard, and I can go in here and reduce the minutes. Well, while I'm not even there. It's, it's pretty nice. You know, through, it just hooks into your wifi at your house.
Yeah.
Whatever. There's my comment. I really like it.
I could tell.
Anyways, do we have any board requests for future agenda items?
I think we're bringing back Bank of the West.
Got that. All right, well, let's get into the meetings. May ninth, Director Aguilar?
Thank you, John. Yeah, we had a, a request from the new developer who has acquired the Toronto project in North Cathedral City to, to work out some terms regarding the meters that they want to, they want to bank for the balance of the buildout, which is around eight hundred units. And so we met with, with Jim and with Kerry and I think worked out a, a, an agreeable solution. So I appreciate that. And that project can move forward now. That's it.
Great. May eleventh, Colorado River Board?
Yeah, that was held in Ontario. And it, we got the updates on the river conditions. And we also were presented, probably most notable item presented with the budget for the, for the Colorado River Board of California, as well as the sixth agency committee and the, oh, what's the other one? The authority, right?
Right.
Yeah, so the authority and the authority's budget doesn't call for anything. And I believe that next meeting we'll be looking at the budget of two point five million dollars for the Colorado River Board. And our share is sixteen percent, yeah, sixteen percent of that. So that was the main thing to just review that. We approved it to send it back out to the agencies for their approval.
Good. Coach Chilavelli Conservation Commission, Director Bianca?
So a big parcel was purchased, one that most all of you guys know. It's, I explain it on one eleven, past the volcano before the, in Palm Springs, before you get to the dealerships, there's the Vaughn Shopping Center. Above the Vaughn Shopping Center, that property had been slated for development for many, many years. And the conservation commission had purchased that piece. So that, and then the, the, say, the PGA Bighorn Fence is, is on its way thanks to the district and the people over there. So that should be starting to break ground here shortly.
Let's see, May twelfth, Desert Valley Builder Association, we had a board meeting. What did we do? We went over all of our committees and et cetera. Nothing, nothing particularly interesting to report. May thirteenth, State Water Board Racial Equality Action Plan Development.
So, you know, I, I had reported on the first meeting. This was a, a virtual retreat. It was a, two days, a, a week apart. And it was kind of the first time that I had heard of it. I got a special invitation by the board and staff to, looks like they're, they're working on, on what they're calling this racial equity plan. And I'll just read a little bit of the background. It says, in fall of twenty twenty, State Water Board Executive Director Eileen Sobek convened a racial equity team to advance racial equity for the communities we serve and within our organization. They reached the historical milestone on November sixteen, twenty twenty-one, when the board adopted a racial equity resolution. The resolution was just one milestone on their ongoing journey. And the next step is to develop this racial equity plan that includes specific actions the State Water Board will take to address racial inequities as well as metrics to measure our progress. We aim to develop the racial equity action plan in collaboration with tribes, stakeholders, and the communities most impacted by our work. Our goal is to complete the plan by November twenty twenty-two. The State Water Board members will not approve or deny the racial equity action plan. However, staff will update the board on its implementation periodically. So, so it looks like they're working on this. It has a lot of different things that they're trying to achieve. And so this retreat was for us to kind of interact with water board staff. So that's, that's what I did that day.
Great, thank you. Then California Delta Stewart, Delta Stewardship, Director Nelson?
Yeah, so the council, Delta Stewardship Council had a webinar regarding salinity in the delta and how it's managed with, with the barrier and so forth. So Jayland, you might recognize him from UC Davis, PPIC director. So it was Brett Milligan and Nigel Quinn. It was just like a conversation about salinity in the delta. Talked about urban extractions out of the delta. Talked about historical levels of how far the, the salinity moves up. And it was quite informative in how they manage our state water project supplies.
Good. And then we had the seven basin states. Was that the same?
Yeah, that was the same day. And we met with tribal representatives who have an interest in working on the twenty twenty-six renegotiations of the operating criteria for Lake Powell and Lake Mead and kind of getting our expectations out for the next couple of years. So that was kind of our first meeting with them regarding that. So it was very informative.
Good. We had the May seventeenth workshop on Colorado River Conservation. We had four directors present, I believe.
Pretty well attended, I thought.
And I heard some good feedback on the presentation by Robert. You know, I think there's still a lot of, of details to be ironed out. So we're going to continue to work towards that.
Yeah.
To finalize that.
Same, my same reaction to the meeting.
Yeah. We had a special meeting of the board on the eighteenth. We also had later on that day, the disadvantaged community task force, which I did not attend. But Director Estrada?
Yeah, it was a regularly scheduled meeting. Went over the projects that we're working on. And we had folks from EPA there. We've invited them and so they, hopefully they continue to participate. But a lot of good momentum and pretty much it.
Yeah, good. Then May nineteenth and twenty basin states principals?
Yeah, CLE has a conference that they do a couple of times a year on a lot of the river and Colorado River Basin. And so we also held a, so that was on May nineteenth and twentieth. And so we also had a seven basin states meeting, which we didn't get very good news moving forward. And as you recall, and I probably should have said that at the Colorado River Board meeting, we, we reported that California did sign on to response letter to Department of Interior agreeing that two actions would be appropriate in the, in the state of the hydrology. One action would be that the upper basin implement DROA releases from Flaming Gorge Reservoir down into Lake Powell over the next twelve months. And that would happen starting in May and continue on through the first of next year. So in the efforts of trying to protect both lake levels at Lake Powell for, for delivery reliability to the lower basin, but also protect the power pool. So in conjunction with that, the lower basin agreed that instead of releasing seven point four eight million acre feet from Lake Powell to Lake Mead, that with a seven-foot impact to Lake Mead, in other words, at the end of the year, seven foot lower, that four hundred and eighty thousand would be left up in Lake Powell. So we, we agreed to that letter and that was approved by the, by the Colorado River Board. So the board signed, so I signed it for the board. And so with that as the kind of the context, the, the bad news was that the runoff forecast from the latest twenty-four month study is six hundred and fifty thousand acre feet less than what it was a month ago. So it seems as if we're kind of chasing our tails on, on hydrology here. So that's a big concern moving forward and we'll continue to, to, you know, work together to try and figure out how, how we can, you know, manage the joint operations of the river. So it's getting pretty dry there. Melted the next day, right? So it just.
But still, but still something.
What's happening is with the, this iridification of the area is when it snows, you get the What's happening is with the, this aridification of the area, is when it snows, you get the evaporation from the, from, the snow will actually evaporate more than it runs off. And that's, that's what we're seeing, you know, the result of which is, you know, the lower, the lower forecast for runoff. Same thing is happening in California, and it's happening in the Colorado River Basin as well. So, while helpful to, to saturate the soil, it's, you know, there's like nothing behind it, so that you can't get these raging rivers, it's just like a trickle.
Yeah. Okay. Any other meetings? I, I had one, I'll start. May 11th, I think it must have been before your Colorado River Board meeting. We had a Colorado River Water Users Association meeting at 9:00 AM on Zoom, and just approving a budget and raised rates a little bit for the Las Vegas meeting, but they're doing fine financially. Good. So, we march on, Krua. Any other meetings?
Just to add on to that, May 19th and 20th, I actually traveled back on the 21st. I had a dinner with IID and Interior, so that was the 19th to the 21st.
I had a meeting on the 16th. That was a North Lake project update, met with Riverside County, Salt Sea Authority, California Natural Resources Agency. It was a meeting with Secretary Crowfoot, and we went over some items. The operations and maintenance plan, the state team will provide feedback by June 3rd. They're going to start working on trying to establish some of those O&amp;M responsibilities. They're also going to revise the project cost estimates, they're going to revise the master schedule. The, the lead agency needs to be identified for land access, so that those instruments can be recorded with proper responsibilities. They're also going to start working on the water supply assessment. They try to, they're going to try to complete that by the end of June. And then, for us, I think the, the conversation about water supply to the project, what was conveyed to Secretary Crowfoot was that similar to what we had discussed before, trying to come up with some sort of budget appropriation in case Rosedale Real Bravo water is available. And so, we've asked them to help us, you know, try to secure the two-years' worth of water supply from that source. And so, those are kind of the next things that are going to be worked out. On the 19th, we had a meeting with EPA, State of California Water Resource Control Board, Riverside County, and I think it's just more of what we're going to do tomorrow, which is meet with EPA. They want to get a sense of what we're doing as it relates to conservation projects, and then what the state is also working on. So, so I think it's just going to be more of what we're going to do tomorrow, so I think more to come on that.
Any others? No? All right. Is there a motion to approve per diem for the meetings reported on?
Want to make a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that passed. Okay, that gets us to General Manager Report.
Yes, sir, I think some of you, President Powell, Director Nelson, Director Estrada, Vice President Estrada, received an email about a Colorado River tour. This is something that Tom Levy has been doing for years. And it's in the fall, September, October. We'll push out an email to Director Aguilar and Director Bianco, see if there's an interest in attending. It's basically an arrival plus three days on the river. Arrival is usually going to be at Salt Lake City or Grand Junction, Colorado. You stops include Paradise Valley, Glen Canyon Dam, and Hoover Dam, and I think you're also spending some time on the river itself. I haven't done it in a while, but I'm getting vertical head nods from, from Robert, so. If there's an interest, let us know. They will entertain up to five people from the agency. So, if the board members aren't available or are not going, we'll open it up to staff. Then, on the normal thing I usually report on, which is COVID, we've currently got four qualifying cases. We've had 263 recovered, unfortunately, two mortalities. We've got five direct contacts along with those four qualifying cases, so we've got nine off work right now. 459 proof-of-vaccination status, still pending the exemptions, which we probably will not be taking any action on since the requirement for us as federal contractors seems to be held in abeyance. Last thing I wanted to mention is that we've had an employee group. The Employee Appreciation Committee has formed to recognize and appreciate CVWD employees. The name of the committee is called SPARC. I know it's not water-related, but, you know, we're not in the electrical business yet. SPARC, standing for Share, Praise, Appreciation, Respect, and Kindness. They'll be hosting events on the 25th and the 26th for appreciation breakfast for employees, starting at 6:00 AM and going to 9:00 AM. It'll be Palm Desert on the 25th, and then here in Coachella on the 26th. If you want to stop by, I don't know what they're serving, I haven't seen the menu, but...
Breakfast is here at the district?
Yes.
It's nice.
Vegan options?
I know. Scott, do you want to come up and amplify what festivities are, now that we've kind of whet their appetite?
I don't have a menu, but, good morning, President Powell, Board of Directors. SPARC is a newly-formed committee, just as Jim Barrett stated. For the breakfast that we have, we're going to have breakfast burritos for a lot of our staff that go out to the fields and sites, where they can just pick up a burrito, mingle with their coworkers, and then head out. We will have scrambled eggs, sausage patties, donuts. So, it's quite a plethora of breakfast items, and there will be some vegan specialties there as well.
Maybe some fresh fruit?
And, yes, absolutely, fresh fruit. So, if you can, stop by, that would be great. Again, this is really to, really stop and just recognize our employees for all the hard work that they do day-to-day here in the Coachella Valley, especially being employees of the Water District. So, again, thank you.
Yeah, that's great, thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
Do you need a calendar appointment, or do you have it on?
The info, the info would be nice. Calendar appointments don't work for me. Just the info. Jeff Fray?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would just mention that you had mentioned that the State Board was going to come out with final regulations, that is, today, the meeting started at 9:30, so what is anticipated, that that 20% mandate will go into effect, but that's as of today, the meeting starts, so we'll let you know. And Scott will let you know.
Okay. Thank you. Any department reports?
Yes, sir.
All right, all right. That gets us through the meat of the open session. We are now going to adjourn to closed session to consider the items listed on the agenda. We will reconvene and report out of closed session afterwards. Are we good to go? Yes? So, regular meeting is reconvened, we do have some reportable acts, and Council Fray will handle reporting of that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The board made a closed session on a number of items. There was reportable action on item 13C, Authorization to File an Appeal, on a motion by Director Bianco, seconded by Director Nelson, and a 5-0 vote. On items F and H on the closed session agenda, on a motion by Director Bianco, seconded by Director Nelson, and a 5-0 vote, the board took action to authorize the filing of an appeal. On item J, Regarding the receipt of a claim, on a motion by Director Estrada, Vice President Estrada, seconded by President Powell, and a vote of 5 to 0, the board took action to authorize the return of the claim without action, that's partly untimely, under the one-year claim reporting window of the Government Code, and to reject it otherwise on its merits. That was the end of the reportable actions.
Thank you. And with, with that, we have no further business, and the meeting is adjourned.